Seeing at seven o'clock, I like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is Trevor Laubnissian and I'll be chairing this meeting. All meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center. Is there anyone else who would like to record this meeting? And if so, could you please identify yourself to the audience? Seeing none. As a quick reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The agenda is available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow the order of the agenda. The meeting will be civil and our people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will receive the staff comments. The board members will ask questions of the applicant. And then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it is time for the public record -- for the public comment period, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. And once the podium, please identify yourself by saying your name and address for the record. All comments and questions shall be recorded through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. First, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. Then we are going to proceed to our first item, which is the Courtyard Marriott. Applicant is TMI Hospitality of 64 University Avenue. This is a minor modification request. Prior to the completion of sidewalk approved, along with the MBTA rail line, on each side of lot with interim conditions. Fire away.
Members of the board and Mr. Chairman Paulson Carter with New England Development. I'm here to introduce the first agenda item, which relates to sidewalk construction relating to the TMI Hospitality or the Courtyard Hotel proposal. What I'd like to do is just take a second to maybe zoom out and introduce the sidewalk. The materials that were prepared by Nate at Tetra Tech are a little bit more zoomed in, and I think for some of the new members, it might be worthwhile just to put this in the context of the overall plan. And so with me tonight, I'll make introductions before I forget. Nate, Chair with Tetra Tech, who you've seen plenty of times. Nate is served as the engineer of record for New England Development in all of the master planning aspects of it. But Nate also happens to be the hotel TMI Hospitality's engineer of record. And with us tonight is Jason Francis. He's VP of Construction with TMI. So if we have any questions for Jason, he's happy to answer them. So you may recall, since the very beginning, the very initial master plan, and then the master plan that was recently modified and approved by the planning board about two months ago, there's always been a proposed sidewalk connection that runs between the railroad tracks and the side of the hotel building, which is where it connects to the entire project and then makes its way down to the Amtrak station. Currently, roughly in this location, on the -- in the Amtrak station, there's an emergency egress door. And the proposal, even back to the Westwood Station, the prior project, the proposal was always to convert that emergency egress door out of the train station into a public access door so that riders could enter and exit the station from that door, walk along the railroad right-of-way. So for the beginning portion, they would actually be on a sidewalk that would be on the railroad right-of-way. And then when they got to the project property corner, which would be the northeast corner of the hotel's property, they would then cross onto what is now the hotel property and travel along the sidewalk that's now just on the hotel's side of the railroad right-of-way and enter the project site, just about in line with the front of the hotel. And then there's a sidewalk network system that would connect pedestrians using that sidewalk to the rest of the development. The -- I'm going to save the details of the proposal for Nate. He has some larger drawings to share. But the -- essentially, what is being asked of the board this evening is because the Amtrak approval to make that physical connection into the Amtrak train station building still hasn't been secured from Amtrak yet. We've been working on it for months. Continue to sort of dog Amtrak in getting that approval put in place. But because of the uncertainty in when we're going to actually obtain that permission, the request is just to defer paving of the sidewalk on the hotel property. The concern about the sidewalk on the hotel property that would bring you down to the railroad right-of-way is that that sidewalk would then bring you to a fence. The fence wouldn't be open. It would sort of become an operational and safety concern for the hotel. So the proposal here is just to defer actually paving that sidewalk until the Amtrak approval's been obtained. In the interim, where the sidewalk goes, there'll be loman seed placed so that once the sidewalk is completed, New England Development, by the way, would have the obligation of doing the sidewalk from the train station to the hotel boundary. New England Development would then also take on the obligation of paving the sidewalk that falls on the hotel property. So really, the modification that's being asked here is that the hotel opening is slated for late September, early October. It's not anticipated that Amtrak approval will be in place in time to be able to have that sidewalk in place for the opening. And so it's really just deferring the final paving of the sidewalk until the Amtrak approval And I think all of the members on the board here, I don't know if we can turn it over to Nate if there are no questions. I think we're familiar with the Village layout. It's the plan that we were looking at about six or eight weeks ago.
Do you want to talk into that, Nate?
Sure. Good evening, Nate, Chair with Tetra Tech. Just a little more detail on what we're proposing. This is essentially the path of the sidewalk connection. If you recall, there was always a two-wall system associated with the sidewalk. We had a wall constructed basically right along the property line with the T station, and then another wall constructed west of the sidewalk that held up the parking lot. This eastern wall is currently constructed to about three feet in height with a rip-wrap slope on top of it. The proposal is to come back in and stack additional blocks along the length of the sidewalk to build the base up for the sidewalk so we can hold the sidewalk base, and then come in and construct a second wall on top of that that holds up the parking lot. We'll construct all the fencing and guardrails that are associated with this. And then actually, we're going to extend the guardrail temporarily past what wants to be the sidewalk connection to help deter people from wanting to go down this path. And that'll be planted. And this will also be, you know, loman seed with four inches of loman. As you go south of the wall, transition back to the three-foot wall with a rip-wrap slope on top. If I flip one more sheet. This is the grading plan. The grading plan hasn't really changed from what's approved. We're going to build everything up to the sub-base. We'll get the gravel under the sidewalk. And just on top of that gravel, we'll put four inches of loman seed. Once the Amtrak approval is obtained, that loman seed can be removed. We can put the sidewalk into place. And then, at the end of the day, come back, remove this sidewalk piece, put the sidewalk in the handicap ramp, and then we'll have to stripe a crosswalk. So that would be the proposal that's in front of you. Be happy to answer any technical questions?
So this was in the plans all along, and yet it was built with a wall right along the -- no provision for a sidewalk. And why was that done?
The wall that was put in there is versatile so that you can actually add blocks to it. So it has the capability of being modified. It was originally a question of timing. There was just a misunderstanding as to when all this would have to be done. So we can adjust the wall. We can add blocks to it. We don't have to remove the wall or anything like that. So it's a wall type that's versatile. It can accept more blocks, and it can be stacked to accommodate the profile that we're looking at.
Is that the outer one now, or is that the --
That's the one that's on the property line with the MBTA tracks. So that's this wall.
You would be removing blocks from that one?
No, we'd be adding blocks to it. We'd be building it up. The wall along the train station property, right now, is just a level three-foot wall. We're going to add blocks to bring it up to six or seven feet at this location. So through here, the wall's going to be ramping up to accept the sidewalk grades.
Now, it looks like it's almost that maybe, from the perspective of the station, it might be deceiving, but it looks like it's already up to the level of the parking lot.
No, through here, it needs to come up. You know, through here, it's okay. But as you kind of move south, that wall has to come up another three feet, roughly.
Well, the history of this is, again, as Paul mentioned, is extensive. Westwood Station, this was originally to be the entrance, the pedestrian entrance to Westwood Station. It originally was a broad sidewalk. There were no cars parked anywhere around there. It would turn right up through a boulevard. So you'd come out of the station, you'd come up here, and you'd see a nice boulevard with houses along each side of it, a big entranceway into Westwood Station. So now with all the surface parking, the hotel position where it is, it's now down to, what is it, five-foot sidewalk, I believe?
It's five-foot paved in between the --
Yeah, so it's not quite what was originally hoped for, but it's still just as important as it ever was. And it needs to be built. The whole concept of University Station, Westwood Station, has always been next to the station. You want people to be able to walk out of the station, go right up to the project. And this would be like a pedestrian gateway into the project. So let's just build it. I don't understand why the wall wasn't built right in the first place. I don't know why there should be any delays now. We should just build that sidewalk. I think the saying that this is some kind of security thing, you can put a temporary fence at one end of it.
Steve, I don't want to interrupt you, but I think that's what they're saying, right? You're going to build it except for the last connection between the sidewalk and the Amtrak.
No, they're not.
So let's --
Sure.
Jason, let me just get everybody on the same page in terms of the plan. So there's two segments of the sidewalk. One segment falls on the hotel property, which is the sidewalk from here and goes up the ramp. That's the segment where the pavement will be left off, and it'll be four inches of loman seed in place of the actual sidewalk material itself. So this segment that's on the hotel property would be temporarily paved -- I'm sorry, temporarily seeded. The second segment of the sidewalk is, once you get onto the railroad right-of-way, there's a segment of sidewalk that's almost as long as that. Maybe it's two-thirds the length of the one on the hotel property that goes from the hotel's property boundary and then meets up with the building. The sidewalk on the railroad property can't be built. We can't construct that until the Amtrak gives us permission to do that. And Steve, really, the timing issue of proposing that this portion of sidewalk on the hotel property not be constructed is because there would be -- it would physically be a paved sidewalk. Granted, it could have a piece of guardrail in front of it. It may have a couple of pieces of planting material in front of it. But nonetheless, it would be a paved sidewalk that starts opposite the front corner of the hotel. It would go down gradient. There's about a six-foot grade change from the sidewalk here to the bottom of the sidewalk where it hits the railroad property boundary. And at the bottom of that grade, there would be a fence. It would be the fence that brings you right onto the railroad right-of-way. So what makes it an operational issue is it collects trash. It's a sidewalk that people see as paved, that for whatever reason find themselves on there despite maybe efforts to prevent people from getting down there. And then when they get to the bottom, they get into a, really, a dead-end sidewalk up against a fence. So it presents safety concerns and operational issues that we believe are legitimate issues that become liability concerns for the hotel. So what's being requested here is that -- and there can be assurances provided by NED that the portion of the sidewalk, once the Amtrak connection is obtained, that the loman seed will be removed on the hotel property, and that sidewalk surface will be paved at the same time that the pavement extends on the railroad property right to the train station door. This plan is -- would be constructed exactly as proved. It's designed as it would -- it's designed right now as it was approved on the master plan modification. None of that has changed. The only thing that's changing is that we would have loman seed in place of a paved surface on the hotel's portion until the sidewalk can be completed in its entirety.
It still doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. It's a sidewalk that will need to be -- you're saying you worry about trash. Well, on the planted area, you have the same concern. Putting something at the top, like, and you mentioned maybe a planter, that would be a good thing. We could totally disguise it. A sign there saying "The sidewalk is not yet open" would more than suffice to keep anyone from marking down there. I think it's time to just get this thing done.
Is the concern -- I'm sorry to interrupt, Steve, but is the concern the assurance that the pavement will go -- that the grass will be removed and the pavement will go down?
You know, I want to be sure. I mean, I'm not sure you're really sincere in ever putting this in. I mean, is this just a coincidence that the path wasn't put in first, and now it's --
Steve, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you again. That's not fair. There isn't an obligation that New England Development nor this project has not delivered on here. This is a matter of timing. And as much as we would like to be able to say that we can control Amtrak, and as frustrating as it is, I absolutely understand the frustration that you have in the amount of time it's taken to get the approvals for this. But we're dealing with a large organization, and you can well imagine that this pedestrian connection, it may not be the most front-bunner issue for Amtrak. We are dogging it on a weekly basis. We have a contact in their Boston office. This is something that gets administered by their Philadelphia office. So to say that it's not something that we want to do is absolutely -- it's not fair. The hotel, more than anyone, wants this connection where their guests can be coming directly out of the train station into the hotel. NED has absolutely every intention of delivering on this. We're talking about an interim condition that has to do with the fact that we haven't got Amtrak's approval to do the sidewalk on the Amtrak side of the property line. And all we're asking is that the sidewalk on the hotel's side of the property line just be deferred until we have that approval. Then the entire sidewalk gets paved all at once. In terms of surety, a couple of other things to keep in mind. New England Development isn't going anywhere anytime soon. There are mechanisms that we can talk about to put surety in place, to be certain that once that approval is obtained, that it's going to get paved. I don't think that that should be a concern. And I think that the board well understands that all of those kind of sureties have been put into place over the years as, you know, as the different elements of the project have been delivered. So I am sympathetic, and I understand the frustration in why the approval's taking so long. We wish we could have more influence with Amtrak, but we are absolutely in no way going to fall down on this obligation.
Who are you talking to at Amtrak?
I'm not doing the direct contacts myself. John Tuig in our offices.
I mean, the people at the station itself haven't heard anything about it.
They wouldn't -- I mean, I think you well understand that. They wouldn't be people in the station.
And then they don't seem to think that it would be a problem doing this in time.
It's a -- I don't have to tell you. It's a very large organization.
And then a year ago --
I don't think folks in the station --
A year ago, you were told this wasn't going to happen. We'd known about this for years. And that's when you should have started working on it a year ago.
Steve, we can provide the file.
It's no revelation that it takes time to deal with Amtrak.
Right.
I think everyone knows that.
We -- I didn't say that we started on this last week, Steve. I'll go back and I'll tell you when we filed materials. And I can get your logs of when the communication started, when we supplied an application to them. They have a bunch of materials that we're waiting for them to respond to us on. Their process is we submit an application, they review, and they say, "We think we're going to need this much money to review this. Send us a check," and then we'll start reviewing it.
Well, I appreciate those logs. Can you get it to Abby?
You know, it's -- I think you're probably familiar. There's a railroad crossing that we're waiting for CSX to show up and do a little bit of railroad work on University Ave.
CSX, that's different. That's probably worse than Amtrak.
There's a theme there, right? We've been waiting two years. We've been waiting two years for --
When is that going to be done?
Wish you could tell. The tracks were delivered -- I have a photograph. I can show you where the tracks were delivered. They're of snow on them.
From this winter?
Yes. The tracks were delivered.
Those power tracks that are next to now, those are the ones that are going to --
Yes, yes. And you know how long they've been there, Steve. They're not the easiest organizations to get through the process on. It's not a significant piece of work for Amtrak.
But I think it's just, why go to the effort of not putting in the sidewalk when you could put it in? You could get, you know, anytime, October 2nd, 3rd, you know, you could get the approval. And so why not just put the sidewalk in now?
But again, just to be clear, Steve, on the scope, there's a segment of sidewalk that gets constructed on, let's call it, private property. It's on the hotel property. Then the property boundary between the hotel property and the railroad right-of-way is here, and the sidewalk literally crosses over that boundary. There's a segment of sidewalk that can't be started until we get that approval. So --
I'm aware of that.
It's literally a couple of days' work to take the loman off of where the sidewalk goes and to replace it with the paved sidewalk. The point is, is that the feeling is with the uncertainty of how long it's going to be before the Amtrak approval gets there, TMI's feeling is that it becomes somewhat of an attractive nuisance. It's a sidewalk that dips down six or seven feet below the hotel grade. It's paved. There's a fence at the end. It looks like a very inviting place for kids to sort of hang out. And the preference is to make it look like a landscape area rather than a sidewalk leading someplace.
I think just put a five-foot wide planter at the top of it, no one even see that it's there, and remove the planter when you're ready and finish the sidewalk.
I think a sidewalk to nowhere is a terrible idea, Steve. I mean, come on. You know, along the train track. Like, I just think it's just --
It's not along the train track. It's still on the side of the fence away from -- I just --
But I mean, like, this is, you know, this is how projects fall apart, is that you're waiting on somebody else to do something. Doesn't look like they're going to do it. So you don't do your part of that. And then a couple of years pass, and it's like, oh, well, we don't really need that after all. You know, things are going great. So I just don't see, why don't you just go ahead and do it as planned, when your part is 100% complete, and then it's all on Amtrak? And everybody looks at it and says, it's not --
Well, again, Dave, again, just to be clear, we have a -- NED, once the approval happens, New England Development has to build a sidewalk on the railroad portion. So if the worry is that NED has the potential to fall down, this sidewalk can be constructed on hotel land. NED falls down, and the sidewalk that constructed on the railroad portion never happens, and therefore, you never get to the train station. So again, we're back to, we can provide the assurance, both, you know, a securitize assurance and a letter of obligation, as we've done on other matters on the project, to be certain that it's going to happen once the Amtrak approval happens.
I think that, yeah, I think once the Amtrak approval happens, of course. But my concern is that it's, you know, both sides are kind of not making it the biggest priority. It's, you already feel like it's not their priority, and yet, although this whole thing was a transit-oriented development, the whole point was to connect the train station to this. I don't know why it's not their priority, but they're not here to, you know, talk about it. I would say, get your part done 100%, and then it's all on Amtrak to finish this up. And then when they give the permission, you --
Exactly. If we waive this, then it's no longer be a priority for you.
I think a dead-end sidewalk is just a thing to put pressure on Amtrak to say, "Look, when are you going to give them permission to finish it?" And that's exactly what you need to get it done, not just ignore it and let it --
I think it's a bit naive to think that that sidewalk will influence Amtrak's --
We give a little publicity, and it will.
Are there any staff comments on this segment?
No additional comments, I guess. I just had a question for the applicant about the landscaping. At least, this packet on the interim conditions for the modification includes landscape plan. There were some tree plantings along, past the sidewalk, past where the sidewalk was heading towards Brigham. Would those be planted now?
Yes, all the plantings would go back in per the original landscape plan. Again, it would just be as simple as leaving four inches of asphalt out. Everything would be ready to go at the end, ready to come in strip asphalt. The pavements, the base course is in, it's compacted, it's ready to go. And then when everything is constructed, you have one new, consistent-looking sidewalk, not a weathered walk that's been there for two years and a new walk. So we're really trying to get as much of the -- get all the hard work done. It's just the easy cleanup at the end. So the landscape plan doesn't change as a result of this.
Okay. And that grading continues? You said the grading was going to be --
The grading plan doesn't change either. We put four inches of loman in place of four inches of asphalt. So it's a simple swap of loman out for asphalt when the --
How long will that transition take? If you guys have got the go-ahead tomorrow, how long will it take to build the sidewalk all the way to the Amtrak property?
Two weeks.
We could build a sidewalk on the hotel property within a couple of weeks' time of getting notice. That's absolutely in our control. What I can't tell you definitively is, I'm sure that there's some construction coordination issues with our guys physically constructing the sidewalk on the railroad property. So the hotel, the private property aspect, that's in our control. That's something that we could probably mobilize and literally in a couple of weeks' time have that paved.
Amtrak themselves do a fair amount of construction throughout the country. I'm sure they've got it down pretty good, too.
But Amtrak is not responsible for building any of this.
So you're doing the actual work on Amtrak's property?
Yes. And the construction coordination that I was speaking of is, they'll have to grant us access. You know, we're working in their right-of-way, and there will be stipulations on how our contractor works inside of their right-of-way. The other thing to -- the other aspect of this to remember is that there's a physical door in that station today that operates as an emergency out. That door has to be reconfigured to be a door that goes in, in and out. And so the mechanics of the reconfiguring of that door, I suspect, will take longer than building the 100-feet of sidewalk.
But that doesn't fall to you?
We're responsible for doing that work with Amtrak.
Without going down a rabbit hole here, do we know, in two individuals less, what the holdup is with Amtrak? Is it simply just a process-driven thing that's not a specific injection to the plan?
It's a process-driven thing. It's the same exact process as getting CSX to approve a design for widening the railroad crossing on University Ave, a couple of feet on either side of that railroad crossing, and going through the process. Thank you.
I have an important question. So are you asking now at this time, because the completion of the sidewalk is a condition for the occupancy of the hotel, are you asking at this time that the hotel be allowed to open without the sidewalk being completed? are you asking at this time that the hotel be allowed to open without the sidewalk being completed?
The request was that the hotel be allowed to open with loam and seed in place of the sidewalk and then some surety that the sidewalk will be constructed as soon as the Amtrak approval is granted.
So you're asking for that approval tonight?
Yes.
Well, I think regardless of whether the sidewalk gets constructed or not, we should hold off on that. There's plenty of time between now and the time that the building be ready to be occupied and you can always come back to us. I know you enjoy doing that. And let's answer that question later. I think this might just be a disguise for not doing this and saying, "Okay, the building can open and now all the pressure is off and you can take your time on getting the Amtrak approval."
Steve, it's not, I need some help. It's not clear to me, it's not clear to me why you feel as though there's an aversion for this team to put the pavement down, to put a five-foot wide sidewalk. Is it 150 feet long?
Yep.
To physically, it's probably harder to grow grass than it is to pave a sidewalk. So I'm not understanding why you feel as though the whole objective here is for us to avoid doing it. We are honest and truly trying to avoid what is, what really is an operational and safety kind of attractive nuisance that's not good practice. And do it when the approvals happen, when the sidewalk on the railroad side gets done.
I don't think it's much of a nuisance at all. I think just put the sidewalk in, get it over with.
Nora?
I just want to add a little clarification, give you a little history on all the project as we've gone through with regard to the sidewalk, but then I do have another question I want to come back to on landscaping. So this is not something that was just recently requested. I have meeting notes going back almost two years where we've been discussing the need for Amtrak's approval. Right now, there's an exit-only door from the train station. We're asking Amtrak to change that to an entrance door, to change the way their station operates for the convenience of our development in Westwood. It's something that the planning board always wanted. It was discussed back in the Westwood Station days and it was discussed with the university station approval. As soon as the plans were ready and as soon as the TMI plans were approved, the request went in first to MBTA, who has the garage, and then to Amtrak. It has been pushed along through the process, it is sitting in DC and we are waiting. There's nothing we can do to further rush this. We're in communication through John Tuig, working for NED on a monthly basis. We discuss this at least once a month to see where things go. The intention is to put the sidewalk in. TMI originally did their construction thinking that they didn't have to put the sidewalk in until that approval came down and you saw where the wall is three feet lower than it needs to be and there need to be changes there. So we met with TMI on site and we explained to them that we would not ask the planning board to allow a change to the plans, to issue the CVO for the hotel unless the grade was brought up, unless everything was done except for the final coat of pavement. That's the only thing that you're being asked to delay here. We think it makes perfect sense to withhold the pavement until you're ready to do the same thing. There's no point in paving a portion of a sidewalk and then having a seam and coming back and paving the other one when no one can go down that sidewalk to get anywhere and we don't want to encourage anyone to go down that sidewalk. So there's no point in developing it sooner than you need to to have it sit there and just, you know, be covered with snow in the winter and eventually crack. We are waiting until we get the approval. It's possible that that approval could come next month and if that happens, the sidewalk will be constructed next month. It's possible it can come next spring and it'll be constructed then. As far as funding the construction of the sidewalk, the town will withhold funds from NED. We'll have them in an account and we will be ready to put the sidewalk in if NED doesn't act. We have no reason to think that they wouldn't because anything we've asked them to do in this whole project has been done in a timely fashion. But the town is not going to put trust in that area. We're going to hold funds so that it can get done. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request. This is not changing the design of the project for this portion of it down by the sidewalk. It's simply delaying the implementation of the pavement and the pavement only. The sidewalk area will be completely ready to go. Now, the one question I do have, that's the portion of the sidewalk that's shown on the plan right here. There's another area back here where the original plan called for the wall to be the same height all along the border of the property and for there to be a landscaped area here. Now, I know Nate, you said there's no change in the landscape materials, but there is a change in the location of those materials, right? This plan says that there will be riprap, sloped riprap here. So originally, the plans that were approved had a flat surface level with the parking area. So that's a little bit different. So the plans that you're being asked to consider with the sidewalk, the grading remains exactly as you approved it. It's just the pavement that doesn't go down. But from here back, there's a change in the grading. It'll be a slope and the landscape will be planted in the slope, the slope down to the tracks. So the landscape will be on the track side of that slope. So that is a little bit different and that's something that I think the board may want to discuss and debate whether that makes sense or whether you would like to see the full height wall, the length of this area so that the landscaping remains as originally approved on the top of that. But as far as delaying the time of the pavement with funds in hand that the town can use to put down pavement as soon as we get that approval, I don't think that's an issue. And keep in mind that Amtrak is reviewing this, a change in the door to their station. It's a transportation hub. Amtrak has concerns about security and wants to make sure before they approve a new entrance to a station that they've gone through the process and asked all the questions. So it's bureaucracy at this point, but there's nothing we can do to move it any faster than we're moving it now.
What exactly are these funds that are being withheld and how much, who determines how much?
We'll have an engineer determine, we'll have Phil determine what the cost of that sidewalk is and we will hold cash in an account to cover the cost of the work.
But that's additional money they have to put up because right now, are we holding any money?
We are withholding funds for building permit, we have a building permit fee account with funds to be returned to NED and we will not return a portion of those funds. We will hold on to the cash until the work is done. But there's no reason to think that this work won't get done. The only delay is Amtrak. And until we have that approval from Amtrak, there's no point in putting sidewalk pavement that leads nowhere.
And the physical changes to the door will be done at NED's expense?
Yes, that's our obligation.
So that money needs to include?
Yes.
The door probably may cost more than the sidewalk.
Whatever's necessary to do for the project, we'll make sure funds are available to do that. TMI's obligation that NED is taking over is the sidewalk itself. NED's obligation has that sidewalk in the door. That's a project development cost that doesn't hinge on this certificate of occupancy. You can only hold TMI to the sidewalk, to completing the plan on their property to the extent it needs to be completed. So we're asking you to allow TMI to have its certificate of occupancy when their building is complete, when everything is done except for that final pavement.
So I think they should do the rest of the landscaping the way it was done originally. And I'm concerned about the extension of that guardrail, which is a pretty extensive guardrail. I think you should make, keep the guardrail the way it was. If you want to plant a few bushes in front of it so it doesn't look, I know there's no sidewalk there. It's just a sloped area, so why is it necessary to further, you know, put the guardrail there? Why don't you just put the guardrail as originally and it's just costing you extra money anyway?
That's fine.
And just plant a bush there. I still think you should make, just put the sidewalk in.
I mean, I don't, I have no doubt, I'm not questioning your commitment to do this. I'm questioning that this is just going to make it, I think if we approve this, it makes it less likely that the sidewalk will ever happen, not because of your unwillingness to do it, but because it kind of puts it on the back burner for everybody. Everything can continue to go along and I think that this project has been full of things like that where we'll compromise after compromise and this is a gateway to the whole thing, so.
So I can assure you, this will never be put on the back burner. This is one of the most important issues that we ask about constantly, that we follow up with constantly. It's on, it's at the top of our agenda at our monthly meetings. This is not something that's going away. It's not only important for the hotel, it's important for all the future development in Phase 2 and it's important for the development that already exists up at Bridges. And they are expecting this connection to the sidewalk, to the train station as well. And it's an important component of the project and not something that is going to be forgotten.
Why is it necessary to give them approval to open now without the sidewalk completed? We have till October to make that decision.
For planning purposes.
And really, the hotel, really, their work needs to be complete. The hotel site work really is going to be complete in the latter part of August. The site work is not going to be done, it doesn't want to be the night before guests arrive. So remember, it's like any of the other retailers where the last month or six weeks or so people are moving into the building, there's training, there's all of that. The site really needs to be done in August and that's not that far away, so. Steve, we're saying at this point, Amtrak is not going to call us next week. It's not likely they're going to call us in four weeks, so we're just trying to do some prudent planning.
Steve, let me ask, what would be the difference if you did hold on? What would be the benefit of holding a decision until October? It would be the same decision then or now? And if you make the decision now to allow the hotel to go forward without paving that, the obligation begins now for NED to pave it as soon as they get the approval. So I don't really see what the benefit would be in holding a decision off until October. All that does is put a doubt on the construction for TMI. They're moving full steam ahead, ready to open their doors first week in October. I don't know why we wouldn't want to give them the assurance that they're ready to go as soon as they're, as soon as the construction sign-offs are complete.
Still not sure whether this is more building a sidewalk and not building a sidewalk or just getting that approval to open.
The question is before you because Abby cannot sign off on behalf of the planning board to allow the building department to issue a CVO unless the work is done in accordance with the plans. So you're being asked to consider a request for a modification of those plans to remove, the request does two things. One, it removes, it delays the timing for the pavement of the sidewalk and the second is it changes the finish work in this area south of the sidewalk. So I think you should take those two portions of the request separately, consider them separately. But I strongly recommend that you support the request to delay pavement. I don't think it's logical to put down half of a sidewalk now when the second half, the important half, the part that gets to the structure you're trying to get to, can't be completed. I just don't think that's logical.
Any comments from the board at this point, though?
No.
Any comments in the public?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Jason Francis with Courtyard by Marriott. I appreciate all the conversations that have been going back and forth here and thank you guys for taking a look at this for consideration. But truly, TMI does want this entrance to happen too and it's merely for guests to deter them from not having to go down to that end of sidewalk. And that's really what we're trying to do. It does come to be an operational hazard and that's all, we just want to deter anything from anybody going down there and having any issues. And in the event that the approval comes, both of us are all on board here to have that happen and to help NED make that happen and that's what we're here to do. So we appreciate your consideration on it and thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else in public or are we multithought? So do we have to, Abby, do we need to make a motion to consider to find this a minor modification first and then actually approve the request?
Yes, and there are, as Nora noted, those two items, right? Deferring the final paving and then also the change to the final grading in that south of the sidewalk.
So we're going to make two separate motions for.
Yeah.
Please, yes. So do I hear a motion for finding these requests to be a minor modification request?
I'd like to make a motion to find a minor modification request at 64 University Ave, Courtyard Marriott.
Do I hear a second? Okay, the motion stalls. I've never seen this happen before, so.
You can, if she was the chair, make a decision.
I don't know, procedurally, is that? All right, our second motion for the, to find us a minor modification. Any further discussion? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, did you, are you not finding it minor?
I abstain from this. I'm kind of, it may be a minor modification, but it's a major subject.
So you're abstaining and not opposing? And now, was that minor for the final paving one?
The final paving.
That was minor for, okay.
Yes, for the paving. Now, the whole subject, secondary subject of the new grade of the landscaping on the southern end.
Yeah, south of the sidewalk.
Well, I'll just move that the only changes to the plan that we allow should be the holding off on the paving of the sidewalk, holding off on the painting of the crosswalk and allowing them to plant a bush at the top of the slope here so it doesn't look obvious that it's a path there.
Okay.
And I think those are the only three changes that are needed.
So those would be our conditions of the approval of the minor modification request? I'm just, I'm sort of asking Abby, I don't know.
Well, I don't think that nearly even needs any plans to, just to stay there.
Can we just not even take that second part? We don't even take it up?
Um.
I think.
I think we should not just approve these plans. Let's simply approve that the sidewalk not be paved, the crosswalk not be painted and they allow them to plant a bush at the top. And no other changes should be made to the plans.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Is that clear, the applicant, what we've just said?
No pavement, revise the plan to take away the, to bring the wall back up full height and take the riprap up.
Well, that's, the wall at full height already is on the old plans.
Right, but so that there's a plan that Abby can look at, we'll revise C-112 and 122 to reflect the condition that's acceptable opening, which is the original condition minus the pavement.
You should take the same plan you have now and should mark it that sidewalk to be paved when approval is received from Amtrak. And then, but.
Works for me, too.
Crosswalk to be paved when the sidewalk is complete. And then bush to be planted until the sidewalk is completed.
Okay.
Did you want to add a condition about, I guess, some kind of security for the final, until final paving?
Put that all in one motion? And then we'll, well, we'll allow you to, what, you're the one who gives final approval on that? For the occupancy or part of the approval?
Right, or we would hold on, hold the funds until we give written approval that it's been completed.
The township would hold funds adequate to complete the sidewalk both on the hotel property and on the Amtrak property and the cost of the door. Isn't that, wouldn't that be the total amount of money?
The occupancy that's being contemplated relates to hotel work, which is not the sidewalk on the railroad property nor the actual door connection. So we would be just talking about the sidewalk on the hotel property.
Right, but Nora said she would also have money withheld.
I don't think.
Oh, this is the different applicant, is it what you're saying? We need a second motion for that?
No, we're mixing apples and oranges.
We want, we want to make sure that the, the Amtrak part of it is completed. Is that part of this application?
So on the request that you have before you, you want to make sure that we have funds in place to complete the portion of the sidewalk that's on TMI property. You can be sure that the town will work with NED to make sure there are also sufficient funds to complete the rest of the job. But that, the sufficient funds to complete the rest of the job really aren't part of this request. This request is just from TMI.
So withholding the funding just for the paving of that sidewalk?
On TMI's property.
Yeah, right up to the property line.
And can we make a condition that as soon as Amtrak makes their approval, that the work begin as much, whatever it takes to get there?
As long as it's as seasonally possible.
Exactly.
That that work begins as soon as the.
The approval comes.
As soon as you can plant pavement.
Okay.
All right.
The second motion.
All right, so I have a motion, a second, series of conditions. Any further discussion? Okay, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes.
And I abstain again.
Abstention?
Even though it's my own motion.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Make a gentleman.
All right, next item on the agenda, number two is the preliminary subdivision plan, Westwood Estates 2, 563 Everett Street, White Lane, 433 Canton Street, and 100 Hedrow. Proposal for two new single-family house lots.
Yeah, I saw him outside.
You've been on this project all?
All along since I was driving.
He was here.
I remember now he was here. It all blurs together.
He keeps showing up somewhere. Now we have more neighbors.
Yeah, that, that was Hedrow.
Yep.
If you're going to do that, then turn the other one a little bit towards us.
I don't see the Hedrow.
Just an inch, that's all.
Not screwing around, huh? Okay.
All right, is the applicant board proceed?
Good evening, for the record, I'm Peter Zach, attorney with the offices in Dedham, here on behalf of the applicant, David Spiegel, trustee of Canton Street Royalty Trust for a preliminary subdivision, which I believe is named Westwood Estates 2. Also in the audience is David Spiegel, who is the trustee, and Dave Johnson, the project engineer with Norwood Engineering. Dave's actually going to run you through the subdivision, but just a quick background. You may recall back, I think it was in November of 2016, this board approved a 10 lot subdivision, which was known as Westwood Estates. I guess it's now Westwood Estates number one. Probably the biggest debate during that particular process was the wave of the road length for the, which was waived for installation of emergency access connection to Lion's Drive. I want to remind the board that it was the applicant's position then, and still is, that the applicant had the right at that time to actually connect directly to Lion's Drive. However, we had had a meeting, or several meetings with the neighborhood. Their preference was that we not connect it with the through road. So we came in with what is the emergency connection road. You may also recall that when it left the end of the cul-de-sac, we actually went into Norwood and there were some issues about retaining walls and easements, et cetera. That has all clearly been settled. My client now actually owns that property from, that is in Norwood. That was once an easement, so it's no longer just an easement area. But again, that's where the emergency access road's going. The client now has an opportunity to acquire additional land that the butts, the subdivision land, this property's owned by, I believe it's Todd Scott and Sandra Jabeley. It's at 563, 563, I believe, Everett Street. They own approximately 98 to 99 square feet of land, about 2.25 acres. What is being proposed is that they will convey to my client approximately 1.1 acres. They will retain the balance where their home is. And that would be a lot that continues to be on Everett. The proposal is to bring in a road off of the prior approved subdivision road and to add two additional house lots. And as I say, Dave Johnson will go over this in a second. There appears to be, and he'll explain this, there appears to be five lots that are facing this road, but it's really a reconfiguration of several of the lots that were prior approved. So at the end of the day, we had 10 lots and Westwood Estates were called Run with the two additional house lots, so there's a total of 12 house lots between the old subdivision and what is proposed as the new subdivision. So having said that, just by way of background, but we have Dave rock you through the preliminary subdivision plan.
Good evening, for the record, David Johnson, Norwood Engineering. And as Peter indicated.
There we go.
Thank you. Pete indicated my responsibility here is to walk you through the subdivision. He did a great job of summarizing it, so there's not too much for me to add. But the plan sitting in front of you is the plan that the planning board approved last year, showing the 10 lots in the subdivision. What's happening is lots two and three are being reconfigured to allow the 50-foot layout for, for this new street to go through in this direction out to the piece that Peter mentioned is being acquired. In order to do that, lot four also has to be reconfigured to maintain frontage area and all those other requirements of zoning. So what you see on this sheet and up here is the reconfiguration. Essentially, this used to be lot two, this used to be lot three, this used to be lot four. Now it's 2A, 3A, and four has been moved out into this corner. The road, very quickly, is the exact same standard that was approved in Westwood Estates 1. 22 feet of pavement, one sidewalk, LID drainage, underground utilities, gas, electric, telephone cable, complete stormwater system. And it's the same standard, cul-de-sac is the same standard as that was approved here. Road dimensions are all the same. Lots, as I said, the only two additional lots are these, two out here. There is a zone line right here around the property between Residence B and Residence C. That very quickly is, is the proposal in terms of the subdivision control law and what's being proposed for road construction. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has in regards to the subdivision portion of it.
Thank you very much. I guess what might, maybe my first quick question before we go to the staff and staff comments. How many, how many lots is this adding to the overall project, Westwood Estates 1 and 2? Just two? Okay. Okay, I guess we'll hear the staff commentary at this point in time.
Sure, you did, Dedham Westwood Water District reviewed the plans and they were okay with the plans as proposed, with the proposed hydrants and the water service. This application would also require Conservation Commission review under the stormwater bylaw. The Board of Health did review this application at their recent meeting in June and approve the plans. And then the Fire Department, you received comments yesterday that say that they would need at least 22 feet of pavement with the two-foot gravel shoulders around the landscape island in the cul-de-sac. You also received some public comments, I believe about ours here tonight, that was in your packet, and then some comments from Phil, who's here tonight. If he wants to summarize those comments. Phil provided comments on behalf of our Public Works Department.
Where is the, that comment you just said?
Which one? It was in the electronic packet, you see it on Friday. See, we can, we'll get to those later. I have it on the screen. It was, pictures, pictures.
Okay. Okay, Phil, did you see, give a quick summary?
Yeah, yeah. The, Phil Paratus with Beta Group, who's been doing this on behalf of the DPW. It says, it's a, they're using the same standard of construction as the, the previously accepted road. The, the issue, I think, that, that needs some discussion to figure out if, if there's an impact as that this is a dead-end road connecting to, I'm not quite sure what the status of Hedge Grove, Hedrow, if that's still considered a dead-end road with the emergency access. So if it is, then you're extending, you're putting a 428-foot roadway at the end of a 800-foot, to get out to Canton, it's another 800 feet to get out to Canton Street. So not sure how that's interpreted, so they may need a waiver for that as well.
Right, I believe that's, if you remember last time, a year ago when this was approved, one of the biggest topics of discussion was the waiver from the 500-foot limit for the road. Ultimately, as Peter mentioned, an emergency access road. It's paved, that was shown on approved plans and is underway. So with that, I think this, dead ends can't, are not allowed off of dead ends according to your subdivision rules and regs. So that is a waiver, this plan would need that waiver for being over 500 feet from the intersection of Canton Street.
Okay. That's it, aside from that, no other commentary? Okay. I guess I'll ask, did you have a comment, so are you with the applicant's group or you was?
I'm waiting for the public.
I'm sorry, I thought you might have been with the applicant's group, unless you're sitting with them. Okay, any questions from the board, for staff or the applicant?
Questions or comments?
Is there really a difference?
Well, I've been on the planning board a long time and it's always been the policy of this planning board that when a subdivision is done, it's done. There are no additions to the, to the subdivisions. There are no lengthening of the subdivision roads. There's no additional connections to be made. There are no additional roads off of that. There's no further subdivision of the, of the subdivision. That's the way it's always been. I know this in the rush to get this out and we do, that condition wasn't in the subdivision decision. Nevertheless, that's what the policy of the board is. It would take two decisions to allow this. You'd have to have the subdivision, the new, of the two new homes, but you'd have to, because it's part of the existing subdivision, you have to amend the previous subdivision. And that, again, the whole point of what we've always done is that we don't want creeping subdivisions keep growing bigger and bigger. The bill that comes in, it says this is it. And, and you know, what you see is what you get and nothing more. The, otherwise, the, you know, be back and it'll keep growing and growing and growing. Why don't they present, in the first instance, exactly what the project is and that's it? So we've always made a condition in there that says the subdivision cannot be further subdivided, the roadway cannot be extended, all roads can be connected or made off of it. And I think the planning board should stick to that. So that's one way of looking at this. The other is you have the 500-foot road off of what is a dead end. Now, we only allow, we don't grant waivers on the 500 feet. What we've always done, and what we've done in this case, is you can go longer than 500 feet if there's an emergency access road. So the original road has that 500-foot emergency access. This new one does not. So you look at it, it's a dead end from Canton Street on there. It was, over distance, it's way over what's allowed. If you came through the other way, even using the emergency access, it's even greater distance. You just created a, a dead-end street that's, that's greater than 500 feet, no matter how we look at it. The only way I can see to remedy, remedy this situation is to go back and make the emergency access road a full subdivision roadway. And I didn't think too many of the neighbors were in favor of that.
I have one additional question. Could you explain again the convey, that what chunk of land was conveyed from lot, I guess lot eight to create, my understanding of your explanation was that lot eight, which runs on Everett, conveyed a chunk, is conveying or conveyed a chunk of land to make that possible? Could you just expand that again? It's currently to be conveyed.
Parcel that is being divided is this piece here, up to this line, which was the line that was shown on the subdivision plan. So it's this piece right here. Okay?
Yep, that makes sense.
So technically, the, the house there, the lot eight is part of the subdivision, but it's to remain intact?
Right, it has its frontage and, on Everett Street and complies with the requirements of, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the co-board members? No?
Okay. Well, we did have a big discussion about whether there should be an emergency access road or through-street. There was a pretty long discussion.
Yeah, there was.
That we went through that. And, and after all that work and all that decision-making, we concluded we should keep it as a emergency access, even though the town prefers to have through-streets rather than dead ends. So in this case, we now would have two dead ends for the town instead of one.
And are there other waivers on the dead end, quote unquote dead-end street waiver involved in this application?
No, right now, that was the only waiver that was found.
Mm-hmm, okay. We asked, we had a heated discussion about the nature of the connection through the associated improvements that went on, went onto Lion's Drive to sort of assuage the discussion, but. Okay, I don't really have any other questions at this point in time. I guess so.
I'll state the obvious of like.
I'll state the obvious of like, we wouldn't have been approved if this was first, because there's no way for an access road there. So, this had to come after the original subdivision. So, it's hard not to see that as a.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I guess I'll invite the public with any question or comments, sir? If you could approach the podium and say your name and address.
Hi, thank you. David Prosky, 20 Lyons Drive. And I'm just gonna, if you don't mind, hand these over to you guys.
Okay. Let me, let me just.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I just take this down?
Oh, it's all pictures.
So, I, yes, thank you very much. So, I'll try to be brief. At 20 Lyons Drive, I was not originally a butter of the proposal that went through and was approved. But one of the key considerations, I did attend the early meetings, was that there would be thoughtful and considerate integration of the new neighborhood with the existing neighborhoods. And so, that was what was shown, part of the original plans. What's shown here is my backyard property, which is one of the abutting properties, number 20, next to number 40. And you can see that my property line is, consists of a number of heavy woods that are right on the line, and then the area behind that is heavily wooded as well. So, in order for the team to amend the proposal and put in those two houses on the smaller lots, I think it should be noted that those lots are 20,000 square feet versus the other lots that are originally 40,000 square feet, they would have to remove all those trees. That would pretty significantly impact the sightlines and the integration between the existing neighborhoods on Lyons Drive, White Lane, and Westwood Estates. I also don't think it would be easy to maintain any of those trees along the property line, because in order to dig the foundations, the roots would come up, you'd have to strip up overhanging branches, and in the end, you'd be left with a bunch of dead trees separating the property line, if they even remained. I think none of the neighborhoods near Old would benefit from this proposal. I am against the amended proposal, because I think the value proposition of Westwood Estates is that these would be large, elegant lots, 40,000 square feet with 20 square, 20-foot setbacks in the side yards. The new proposal are 20,000 square foot lots with 15-foot side yard setbacks, so they're much smaller and narrower. Ultimately, basically, in Westwood Estates, the small houses are down around the corner, if you want to go see those. For the Lyons Drive neighborhood, there are several other abutters here as well. You can see that, that new piece of property that is being considered to be acquired, it directly impacts myself, the house next to me, and the two houses on White Lane, where, as I mentioned, those woods would be removed. There would not be thoughtful and considerate integration of the new neighborhood versus the old. There would basically be a shoehorning in of two new houses right in between the existing neighborhood, and I think that would negatively impact our neighborhoods as well as ultimately the value prop of the Westwood Estates proposal. So, thank you very much. Happy to take any questions. I think there's a few other abutters here that want to talk as well.
Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Mark Broderick from 30 Lyons Drive. Original plan, you know, I, we were, Mr. Spiegel presented it in a very, very nice way, and we went to a hotel and we had coffee and desserts, and everybody was excited. Everyone was on board. It's gonna be a beautiful, it's gonna be a beautiful thing. You know, it was, you know, life changes. I moved in with these beautiful woods there, but if I have to have something, this sounds like, okay, of all the things that could happen behind me, 10 luxury homes, how can I beat that? Okay, it's, it looks like it's well-planned out. Looked like there, I was assured that there'd be a, a green area so that it wouldn't be, houses wouldn't be on top of me. And I said, gee, that sounds like it's being reasonable. And I'm looking now and I'm noticing that, you know, that the houses are, these two new houses, it's almost like cluster housing within a nice estate setting. It's really, they turned the houses so that you can get a minimum, it appears to me to be a minimum setback. And the wooded section, forget it. The protective green area, no way that's gonna happen. No way, if you have it, if you have it 15 to 20 feet from the line. So, I, I want to be respectful. I feel as though this product was looking really great, and I was listening to my, I have some wonderful neighbors who stood up, Mr. Cronin, who did tons of work on this, and I respect everything he says, and I listened to what he said. Mr. Martin down the street was all for it. And I felt those all were going in the same direction. I was so glad we, you know, settled that issue with the lawless land, and I'm sure that was a hassle for you. But this latest thing, I feel as though, I'm kind of a, I'm gonna sound selfish now, but my lot is really impacted by this, and in a negative way. So, if I were to be asked, Mark, are you interested in this, or Mark and my wife, it's not gonna, it adds no attraction to me. So, I say this respectfully. I appreciate everyone's efforts, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Dooley, 3 White Lane. I'm not gonna repeat what was already said, but I just want to go on record that I'm opposed to it as well, for the comments that were already made by the other abutters as well. Thank you.
Hi. Paul Toleja, 5 White Lane. Same thing as Chris said. I mean, basically, one of these houses is getting put right in my backyard. The original proposal looked great. As was said before, I didn't oppose that, you know, it looked like it was gonna be a beautiful development, but, you know, now it's completely changed, you know, it's just jamming more houses, using more houses in, so, thank you.
Gwen Zoffo, 537 Everett Street. Before, I didn't oppose this project because there was a large house back there, and if anything had to happen to this land, you know, a 10-house development didn't seem all that bad. But there are a bunch of giant pines that are behind my house, and every time you cut one down, you make it less likely that the existing ones are going to survive, because they cluster together and the wind blows and whatever, and the more there are, the more stable they are. I don't know how many trees we're gonna let this gentleman cut down. I mean, we've already cleared all of the land for the existing 10 homes. Now, he wants to clear all of this other land to accommodate two more houses with minimum setbacks. Maybe I should have been strongly opposed to the first plan, but now we're coming, letting him come back to the well and changing, you know, his whole design.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave Canola, 485 Canton Street. One of the things that's kind of unique, I'm sure the planning board recognizes this, is you have residential zone C and then going into residential zone B at the end. Most cul-de-sacs in the town are Westwood, encapsulate the same zone. This is a little bit different. It just so happens to be at the end. I know you've done it, I think, once before, if I'm accurate, on Draper Avenue, at the end, it goes from C to B. So, it's not that it's not precedent-setting. However, in this particular case, there's all this zone C, full development, and then to put two zone B houses. I understand, I mean, they did a very good job. I mean, when you look at it, it's like, yeah, let's get the, there's square footages here, we can do this, we can do that. Doesn't make it, it, it makes it legal, but whether it's right for the neighborhood is another thing. It's just, I was just wondering, you know, what the planning feels. The other thing is the circle. If it does go through, who's gonna maintain the inner circle? I think there's gonna be a light proposed there, and if there's any vegetation there, who will maintain that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Zoffo, 537 Everett Street. I see pretty clearly, you know, the benefit to the developer of adding two houses, but is there a benefit of missing to the neighborhood of adding the two houses? I don't see that. If there is one, hypothetical or otherwise, I'm all ears. The second thing is, I seem to recall when we bought our property, that there was a water restriction on the amount of pavement we could cover our property, and I'm just wondering if I got unlucky such that, you know, we can add more streets and more impervious coverage just so close to where we are. I rather liked the trees. I know that big old house down there that people liked, had to go to accommodate this, but I just think that the benefit here just runs to the developer and no one else. It doesn't, I don't think, make my property any more valuable or anyone else's. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. John, please.
Sang Yano, and 88 Lyons Drive. If people are talking about the suffering, because I'm suffering from the current construction right now. You know, I don't have to send the picture to Abigail, I can show you, you know, on my, on my cellphone. That's what my side yard looked like right now. Before the construction, my side yard just exactly looked like the backyard of the 20 Lyons Drive. So, I'm suffering every day since February. So, I was strongly against, you know, to put another money into another loan. I would rather to finish wherever the road, finish nicely before consider anything else.
My name is Lin Qing again, 88 Light Drive. I'm very, very happy to see my neighbors coming on, you know, so now. But again, like, so, one year ago, we were the only house impacting the neighborhood. Everybody else loved the division, the subdivision. You know, I love the picture too, but then my house is the only one actually got impact. So, now all the green tree are gone. Okay, so, it's too late for us. All the green, my bedroom is facing the construction site every day. I couldn't have any party or anything. So, I don't know how long this is gonna take to finish, especially if they add another division. You know, it's maybe another year. So, we couldn't sell the house. Who's gonna buy the house? And we were the deadline end, but nobody, nobody, nobody helped us. Everybody come out, say, yes, we're for it, and we were the only one who lived that, and we all helped. And we came here every day. I mean, I was, I just, we were all so helpless at that time, and so now I'm so glad, because everybody understands, their backyard is gonna be the same as what we are experiencing now, and we don't know that when, when this is gonna be over. And so, I'm speechless, and I don't know, like, say, in a property value, white green land, I'm all for it, but it just, I, I don't know, are we subject to, like, I don't know what, what to say. And I just glad to see finally people share the view. We, we have been strongly advocated, but I think we've done everything, but now all we wish is, like, we wanna know what's the timeline, how, you know, how soon this emergency road is gonna be finished, what they look like. And before, we asked for, like, an illustration for what's, you know, finished, emergency road looks like, we never got it. What we got is, like, one day in February, and all the, like, more than maybe 200, maybe 300, maybe 400 tree was done on that day. We did not get any notification ahead of time. We went home, in the half of our side yard was like a bell, and, and, and still right now, and we don't know when this is gonna be done. And we went to the node engineering, they said, well, why are you here? And I, I don't know, we don't know what's the schedule and which heavy equipment is moving, when and what. And then, and when we look at the original, you know, so diagram, they said, oh, this is the, the land is gonna be similar to the, whatever the, the elevation is gonna be similar to our backyard, but now clearly with all the earth movement, and there were like, I don't know, maybe, maybe three feet.
Three or four feet higher.
Three feet higher than our backyard. So, I don't know, maybe this is not final finished, like, stage, but it's like, we, we have no control over what's progress is, what's the final, you know, the, the road is gonna look like. And right now, like, my driveway, okay, is like, become, it's gonna become the hidden driveway and connect to that gate. So, when we back out of driveway, we're gonna be walking or worry about the pedestrian and all the bicycle going down to that gate, there's no gate, clearly. And so, so everything changes. We don't know what's the final project looks like, and now we're talking about another subdivision extension, and this could be another two or three years longer for us. This is what I want to say. I really want to thank you again for taking the time to look at the project, because this is really another chance for us to voice our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Any further commentary from the public? So, the comments have raised a series of questions in my mind, probably for the applicant. One starting kind of at the beginning, was my recollection correct in that this, before you even look at the new road, but the road that was approved previously, that was under the care of a homeowners association for a period of time and then eventually conveyed, the intent being that someday it would become a town road? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, there is a homeowners association that has to be filed before any of the lots can be conveyed out of that new, and the proposal would be to include these two new homes, if you will, two, all 12 lots, to be under the same homeowners association.
And the second question, sorry about that. Presumably, the maintenance of both that road and this newer purple road would be under the guise of the HRA before.
Yes.
It's under the guise of the town. Can you speak a little bit to the town name if there's one, or Westwood Estates 1, in terms of?
In approximately 30 days, we'll be doing the finished grading and then the binder. And as soon as we get the emergency road taken care of, then we'll loom and put plantings that would have left the Lyons Drive. All the trees that have been removed have carefully been marked with the town, so the trees that have been removed are for the purpose of the roadway. We have not clear-cut all of the trees throughout the property at all.
Okay.
I'll continue.
Go ahead, yeah, please.
The water is, is pretty much complete, and the sewer is pretty much complete, and the drainage is complete. So, the bulk of the work is done. Right now, we're working to get the gas line installed and the underground electric. So, we're working with the utilities to try to get that squared away. As soon as that's done, then we will grade it.
Grading, Dave. I know we have Senator Jones tonight saying minor modification dealing with some minor change, I think, to your planning, Dennis, or are there, were there any other field modifications that are looming out there that we know about, grading or otherwise? Okay. Okay. I know the fire department reviewed this, the dead-end concern is obviously a fire department concern. Would you care to respond to the concerns of the board about the dead-end condition, and how you feel that's kind of an acceptable approach to this added subdivision?
I guess our thought, our approach to, to look at the design was that this particular case is, is not fish or fowl. It's not a dead-end road which does not have a second access. It is a road that has, is a dead end in terms of the cul-de-sac, but it, it's a road that has a second access. So, it's kind of in between a through-street or a street that's strictly dead-end with no second access. And the thought was that under that waiver of the dead end, that the second access provided something that would allow this second spur to go in, which was under the 500-foot dead-end So, that, that was the, the thought, that it was, again, a unique situation, given the fact that it could have been a through-street, the negotiations were long and detailed with both the board and with the abutters to, to try to make everybody happy with this. And so, that's our, that was our thought. It's neither fish nor fowl, and needs to be a determination made.
Okay.
The other, the other. The other, the other reason that we wanted this to be considered waiver free is, is we'd also like to, make use of the board's policy to, to use the, um, the lane configuration, which would reduce impervious area. Again, to reduce the amount of, uh, pavement that, that would be required. And would also allow additional, uh, land area that would allow structures to be moved away from tree lines and so forth. So, hopefully that answers your question. How about?
Yeah, I think, I think that helps. I'm sorry, the lane configuration, could you explain that a little bit for the, for the benefit of the people in the audience?
Well, the board, the board has a policy that if you can demonstrate, uh, again, through a proof plan, that you can subdivide a piece of property into not more than five lots, that the board can, under their policy, uh, and you must certain other requirements, which we do, that the board can allow a reduction in pavement width from the twenty-two feet to, I think it's eighteen feet for, um, the roadway, which would reduce the amount of impervious. It also allows for no sidewalk, which would reduce the impervious. It allows for LID, which is now a requirement or is allowed under the revisions to the planning board regulations. So, that's not really any, um, drastic change. But that was the intent, was to try to produce a proof plan so that we could do less impervious and, uh, potentially reduce. It allows the reduction in the layout from fifty to forty feet, which would also allow houses to be moved in towards the street to increase setbacks.
Okay, I understand that now. Well, clearly I hope everyone else understands what he's explaining. But that's a little bit strong here. This is the full fifty.
Let's consider the proof plan.
Yeah.
With the exception of the, um, discussion about whether or not it's in fact an extension of a dead end or if it's an extension of a road that has a second access. I think that's what I'm trying to differentiate.
Got you. Okay, okay. Are there any other comments in the board or for the moment content?
So, are you planning to put sidewalks on one side of the street and asking for a waiver on the sidewalks on the other side?
There's one sidewalk shown, um, to be consistent with what's in the approved subdivision. If it made a difference, we can show two sidewalks. It's, was intended to be consistent with what was previously approved and there'd be additional funds placed into the sidewalk fund as was provided for in the first.
Any further questions from anybody?
No.
I guess I'm, I'm, you know, this is, I'm struggling a little bit with the, the sort of the lot six, seven. And I see that it's a very, um, efficient use of that land and a very, uh, I don't wanna say clever, but clever use of the shift and zoning that happens at that edge. It is, which was iterated by a couple of the members of the public, it is, it kind of diminishes the nature of the overall division to go to the twenty thousand square foot lot. And I'm sitting here wondering if you would consider merging six and seven into one. But I'm imagining your performance doesn't really work quite so well if you have to build all this roadway to build this one more lot. So, I, I sort of get that. But that's something from the overall configuration, which would certainly alleviate probably one hundred percent of the concerns iterated by the surrounding, you know, butters. I know we're short a board member tonight, and I think it's been discussed that we would probably be continuing this to our next meeting so that board member can be part of this discussion. But we'll likely be closing public commentary, um, tonight to pick it up at our next, whatever the meeting, decide to continue it to.
Well, it's up to the board. Usually when you review preliminary subdivision plans, you usually vote and act on them in one meeting. You have, you have forty-five days to vote on this application. The timing that this came in, you have until mid-July. Brian wasn't able to be here tonight. If you wanted to continue the deliberation and vote until the next meeting or if you felt you're ready, you could, um, you could vote tonight. Your options for preliminary subdivisions are to vote on it, approve it, approve it with modifications or to deny. And whichever action you take, that does not limit the applicant, they can move forward with a definitive plan filing. But the primary purpose of the preliminary is for you, the board and residents to comment and give direction to the applicant so that they know how to move forward with a definitive filing. So, I guess that's something for you to discuss to see if you want to act tonight or if you need one more meeting to decide. Which your, your next meeting is July eleventh.
Do we have a full house that night?
You have one other continued?
I'm sorry, I mean, do we have our five?
Yes, I think everyone was able to be there on the next meeting.
Well, we do have, um, I would like to avoid the years-long process that happened last time. So, does it make sense to make a decision tonight or do you feel like, and then they can still talk about other things?
Right. The, um, the previous approval, that was a definitive filing. So, you have a lot longer timeframe and it was extended by the applicant. So, this one, yeah, you, you could vote tonight or you should really vote at the next meeting at, at the latest if.
Is there any technical sort of thing because of, would, if we saw this as being an exten, uh, an extension of the original plan? Or is it just a new thing regardless? Like, isn't it more of a modification to the original plan than a new application?
Right. So, this hasn't filed as a new separate application. I think if it were to move forward, if you were to approve this new application, then a modification or amendment to the previous approved plan might be needed also. Although I think that could be later, a definitive stage rather than a preliminary.
Well, we, we granted the original subdivision, uh, and granted waivers for it because it was, and the way the subdivision process works is they come in with subdivision that completely meets all our rules and regulations. We can't really turn it down. But once they can't do that and, and want waivers, then we can look at a lot of things. And one of the things we look at is the neighborhood support. And in this case, the neighborhood was fully in support of the original subdivision. And that's the basis for which we granted, uh, these waivers, not to mention the discussion about whether it should be a through street or an emergency access road. And given that we now have those very same neighbors who were formerly in favor of the original subdivision and now totally against, uh, this extension of the subdivision. I mean, this is a classic example of why we have the policy not to extend subdivisions because of things like this. So, I'm prepared to vote against this, uh, preliminary subdivision. And so, to me, it doesn't matter whether we do it tonight or later.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm just a little bit hung up on letting Brian see the full history of this. If it goes into a definitive subdivision plan, we may be dwelling at this for a while longer. What is the overall schedule for subdivision, major for definitive approval? What is the time clock on that?
For a definitive?
Yeah.
This is the, this is now forty-five days and then I think it's ninety days for a definitive. So, no, they can submit the definitive anytime, but then there's a ninety-day time clock and less extended in, in writing.
Yep, okay.
And that's what happened last time, that it went well over those ninety days.
Yes, we worked hard on that one. Okay. So, I guess, I mean, I guess I would entertain a motion if there was one that was out there on this item, given there seems to be no further discussion and I.
I move that we deny this application for a preliminary subdivision.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those supporting the denial of this application, please vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who don't vote ayes, zero, thank you. So, cares, the denial cares.
Well, sorry, I forgot that you should really say why you're denying it in your, um, motion.
Your motion.
You had mentioned some items before.
We require this, well, requires a waiver of the five hundred foot, uh, dead end street, which we never grant without, uh, emergency access from that cul-de-sac. We have had subdivisions before which had brinched out and had multiple cul-de-sacs. And they had, uh, emergency access at the end of each one. Even if it connects, one connecting to another neighborhood, other coming around and connecting to the other, uh, dead end so that they're all, uh, taken care of. And so, that's certainly not the case here. They can't do that here. So, uh, that doesn't meet that criteria. So, the five hundred foot limitation holds. And then, again, it's our policy not to extend subdivisions once we, and so we so recently granted this one. It's not like we granted it years and years ago. We just recently granted this. You know, they had the opportunity at that time to, uh, present this. And if they had, obviously, no one would have been affected. Those are enough reasons?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, I think, is the same.
Do we need to close the hearing?
It wasn't a hearing, so no.
All right, so we have item number three.
The minor modification, yeah. The minor modification.
Yeah. Item number three for Westwood Estates, definitive subdivision, request for minor modification to plan to alter the watering so utilities.
Once again, David Johnson, known as engineer, representing the owner of the subdivision. During construction, the site contractor approached us and asked us about putting in an additional manhole, an additional water service located at the intersection of the proposed subdivision road that you just reviewed. Because, as Mr. Spiegel mentioned, that the intent is to complete the utilities and pave this roadway within thirty days. To go back, if in fact the subdivision were to be approved, to go back at a later date, excavate the road, would be difficult, if not impossible, to put that sewer manhole and water tap in because of the amount of utilities are in the street. It's amazing how much, um, how much utility is going in the street between water, sewer, gas, electric, telephone, drainage. That would have been impossible. The site contractor had the approval of both the water district and the sewer department to put those two additional structures in. I guess part of the issue was that, as, as the designers of this project, we were not anticipating that with the approval of the appropriate boards to, to put in that manhole was not really a modification of the subdivision. It was just something that's done during construction, um, making good construction planning and to, and to stop, um, construction for a period of two, two or three weeks to get approval, put in a manhole, which the board basically just asked us to have the approval of the sewer department. Since that time, I've met with Phil to go over the proper procedure for doing that, uh, any, any of those minor changes. So, we're all on the same page. And I think he can speak for himself, but I think we're, we've got this worked out. So, and, and much of that's what, what happened. We did it not without, um, proper, uh, support from, from the sewer department and the water district. There's no, there's no change to any of the utilities in the proposed street. It was just a tap off the main where it was originally proposed. And there's the insertion of a sewer manhole in the sewer line where it was proposed. So, we'd asked that the board, um, grant the modification of the utility plan to permit that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you extend any pipes up to get it beyond the edge of the road?
Yes.
So, those are just ended, ended now?
They dead-ended and capped. They were run off the road into the, uh, this area here or capped. And, uh, if they're not used, they're just, they remain kept.
Any other questions? Any comments?
So, I, I see, I see no problem with an extra sewer manhole. Obviously, even if it's needed because that's a complete straightaway and we always put enough in for the required distances. I'm just questioning whether leaving a, a gate there that's never going to be used and that, whether that's really over a long period of time, uh, that's a good idea or not. Assuming that the, the subdivision is not built. Phil, do you have any?
I wasn't anticipating it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a valve sitting there and there's sort of a couple of feet of water that never moves.
Right, right, exactly.
I just bring to your attention that it was not just a T that's capped. There, there are three gate valves which will allow that T to be isolated. So, that, uh, on the leg that's going off into the, um, which would have been the, the new roadway, there's a gate valve at the main that would shut that T off. And there's gate valves on either side of that T that would isolate it. So, it's not that it's just run out and there's water in it all the time, flowing back and forth. It's, it's isolated and shut off.
Right, but the shut off is still a couple of feet from the pipe itself. So, you get that water just sitting there and never moves. The fact that you have two extra valves makes it easier to remove it if, if that of a, if the water company decided it's been there long enough, should be removed. But I, you know, I'm just, that's what I'm questioning. Is it, is it a good idea? If, if it ends up not being used, will, you know, is the best thing to just leave it there forever or, or remove it?
I think it's an insignificant amount of water that's in an eight-inch pipe that's two feet long.
Yeah, I think that would get, you would get some, when the water's full, you'd get some motion. But I, I think that's a question for Dead End Water, Westwood Water, if they want to allow it to be there. I mean, I, I, I think they assume that in not too distant future, that will be extended.
Yeah. I think that's probably the rest of the valve it takes if, if, uh, if we're in a period of time and the, that's not going to be used, that the water company asks for it to be removed.
They file the direction of the water company.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any questions, or any questions or comments from the public on this particular item? Okay, none. To entertain a motion. To, to take a motion to, for this, approval of this request?
I'll move that we approve the request.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the request for modification to the Westwood Estates' definitive subdivision. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you.
I'll just hang out.
You might want to wait until it stops raining.
It's water, it's water moving.
All right, last item is this other business. Do you have any upcoming ZBA apps to be concerned with?
They just received two last week for the July meeting. There was one for an accessory apartment, to legalize an accessory apartment that was already existing on Canton Street, and then there was also a special permit to construct a second-floor addition on a one-story house on a non-conforming structure. And that's still a special permit under the new zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Is it becoming any more non-conforming?
No, I don't believe so. I, I will do another look at it, but it's still a special permit, so it's not, if it was, it would be a variance.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Do you have any committee reports at this point in time?
As I asked Tric meeting, Tric voted to continue what they had, was a chairman and two vice chairman. Years, I think we forgot about the second vice chairman.
Yes.
And so they nominated some people, and have the elections next meeting. So in case, you haven't been informed, have you been informed?
I have not.
You, well, let me tell you, you were nominated as the second vice chair.
Okay.
Even though you weren't present, they nominated you, maybe because you weren't present.
That was my downfall, not being there.
You gotta watch out. I was on the Transportation Advisory Council for less than a year, they wanted me to be the chairman, so you could better keep going at those meetings.
So, yeah, between now and next meeting, do I have campaigning?
I don't have any committee reports, but I, I did unfortunately miss the selectmen's meeting where they deliberated the Islington, or the proposal for the Islington project. Is anyone here who could maybe speak to that a little bit?
Right. Steve and Dave were there in attendance to an audience. So ultimately, the selectmen moved the development project along by, they had some conditions, they worked off the conditions that the Islington Center task force had recommended, and they're working on preparing a memorandum of understanding for their next meeting in July, and then they'll continue to work on a disposition agreement over the summer with the developer. So essentially, the developer can now has, you know, approval to move forward and can begin working on plans that would be submitted to you in the planning board process, so they're beginning that project shortly. So they had some conditions that they're still working out. There was also a revised iteration of this option six that was presented at the selectmen's meeting, by having the community space, all the community uses, the recreation department needs the family services, moved across the street to where the library was proposed, on the, where the municipal lot is today, to have them all together.
So you and I discussed the best way to proceed on this, and whether it'd be good for them to come in for an informal meeting with the planning board, or whether we should have a subcommittee, members of the planning board that would meet with the staff members and start going over the plans.
Right. If, you used to, a couple of years ago, invite applicants to come in to, to talk informally with you, to get your initial input prior to them submitting a full plan and saving time. However, I think when, it was about two years ago, when before the project that's almost done now, his, Petruzziallo's project on a construction now, had come in for an informal meeting, and then it was, it was, it was a difficult meeting because, you know, it was open to the public, there's a lot of questions that just couldn't be answered at that time, and it was, it was hard to really give constructive feedback at that time, at the early stages. So since then, we've moved towards having subcommittee, rather than having it at a public meeting that's open to everyone. You have some, you know, not as many meetings over the summer, which is, the developer will be likely working on this over the next two, three months. So you have your July meeting, and then only one in August. So I leave it up to you, but I've been more towards a subcommittee, where you could have two planning board members. So usually, the chairman will appoint two members as a subcommittee to, maybe meet with the applicant and staff outside of a public meeting, to give feedback prior to this official submission. So that might be one way. So usually, we've had those a few times, they're usually meetings during the day, rather than the night meetings.
Yeah, I think that was, this is obviously a much different issue than anything else we've sort of grappled with, I would say, but I would, I think, for instance, in the women's building, that was fairly successful in terms of just moving the process along efficiently and positively, rather than-
Right. I think, and these plans have already, at this point, they've been, you know, at the concept level, but for almost, almost a year now. It was September when the Islington Task Force, so not you, not this group, has, but the Islington Center Task Force started reviewing them in September and giving some feedback. So they're a little bit further along than when someone would normally be getting ready to submit to you.
Well, I don't think we would ever be accused of not letting the public participate in this one, I mean, up until now, and I feel that the plan got to a point where most of the public's concerns were assuaged, at least for the moment, I mean, and so I'd like to think that that would be an acceptable way to go ahead without doing sort of the informal public meeting, so to remember that being kind of a real mechanism to proceed with, because it was very, you know, difficult to manage, given the amount of information that was actually available, so.
Yeah.
I was thinking that when it does come to us, maybe we should have a process where we kind of set aside, these are the most important issues, and kind of try to work through them, as opposed to just having a series of meetings where it kind of becomes the same thing over and over, and just as a structure, things kind of have, these are the top concerns, and then with our next meeting, we're gonna go, we're gonna take the first four of those or something, and really work through those. Some kind of a process like that could help, I think, versus having six meetings or so, where it's the same issues over and over and over again.
All right, and that's where it'll be also important to, if one, you know, you have one meeting, you open a public hearing, and then you can continue it to a date that makes sense, where they can actually complete the revisions, get them back to you, and to staff to review in advance. When they're too close together, there's not enough time to address everything, so that's where you keep circulating.
Building off what Dave said, you may remember for University Station, when we were going through that review, we scheduled specific hearings on the agenda, or they weren't hearings, public meetings, to discuss issues, like there was the University Station traffic discussion on such and such a date, and then there was a University Station stormwater discussion on another date, and there's a separate one for, even within the traffic, for pedestrian and bicycle circulation issues. So I think you'd be looking to do the same thing here. The design will be evolving as it goes through the planning board process, and I think it's helpful to have meetings set aside to discuss certain aspects of the design.
Okay, can do that.
So are you saying-
So is a subcommittee something you'd think about doing? So no more than two board members could be involved. I know, sorry, I know Brian's not here tonight, so I don't know if you want to even think about it until the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, the next one's not that far away, we're going to meet in the 11th, why don't we wait till we're all here, so we can make a decision about who should be part of that.
So this might be one where a lot of people might want to be on that subcommittee.
I know, have to draw straws, maybe.
That forgot decision.
So I guess, think about that, so-
Yeah, I mean, I guess-
So you likely, we'd want to meet with the applicant over the summer.
Yeah.
So it'll probably be July and August.
Right, probably one to two meetings.
The next meeting is when, July?
July 11th is your next meeting. And then you have a break until, well, we have July 18th, if we could hold that as a tentative meeting, but we don't have any applications submitted for it yet, but if we could hold that until the 11th. But then you have a gap until the August 22nd meeting. So it'll probably be around that time, where we'd want to get the subcommittee together.
Yeah.
Oh, another actual important issue I wanted to bring up tonight is, usually when you select a peer review consultant, we send out a request to several different companies that you've worked with before, and then you select one of them at, at the next meeting that will take on the project. For this, for the special, you know, the mixed-use building that's on their construction now, finishing up, you used Beta Group, and they had KAO Design as their architect, you know, who was on board, he's Mike Sinisi, he's been here a lot, also at University Station. So that was, you had selected them before. I don't know if you might want to, do you want to continue with them, since they're most familiar with the FMUOD bylaw, and it's consistent with what's been approved so far in, in this area? Otherwise, the other ones we went out to, you received responses from other engineering companies, but none had that design component, I think.
I mean, I don't want to speak out of class, but I mean, I did have a couple of thoughts on that. Do you know, did KAO, was KAO involved with the fires, the Islington Fire Station? Were they helping the peer review for that?
I don't think so, right? The fire station?
I don't recall.
No.
Yeah.
I don't think so, because that was-
Many moons ago.
I don't think so, because that was a town project, so I think we were really reviewing that, and maybe, maybe Phil from Beta, but I don't think we had design, designer on that.
Yeah, I guess, and you're saying, so a lot of other practices don't really offer that service necessarily?
Right, I think for Petruzziallo's other projects, you had received responses from, I think maybe McMahon Associates.
Maybe VHB sent somewhere for something like that.
We always reach out to them, but I don't believe they've responded in a while, in a long while.
Okay.
You may have received Beals and Thomas. You haven't used them in a while.
Right.
I think the last peer reviewer that they've been on was the Shell Station, that was approved on Route 1, that's in construction now.
I should remember, Noah, when we were doing the, we did send, I can't remember if they were subcommittee meetings, I guess it must have been subcommittee meetings, we were doing the buildings that they're building now, and we were driving them hard on the kind of village character feel. How much of what we directed them came via Cow versus via you, frankly, or via just us? I remember there were, we prepared images, that sort of thing.
Those discussions were in a pre-application discussion?
Right, right.
And we didn't have Beta and Cow Architecture on board at that time?
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was a, those were staff comments, and then when we did get to a full application that was submitted, then you hired peer review.
Yeah.
I think in this case, we're looking to reverse that, and get peer review in at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Right, so we, so that way, we'd like to have a peer reviewer on the time over the summer, kind of reviewing and commenting on plans by the time they submit an official application to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I would say, I mean, from an aesthetic standpoint, I gotta say, I'm a little overwhelmed by the response, I think they did a good job iterating comments. Seeing the hotel building in particular, I'm a little disappointed in the overall look, I gotta say. And I think we did better on the Brigham Building with some of their direction, but I guess, if there is any alternative that owns that sort of design component, I don't, I'm not sure what to say, so, I mean, that would be just a couple of comments I had, but, but I think we should, obviously, we should go out to, try to go out to multiple, right? I mean, do we have an obligation to do that, or do we, or not, really?
No, I don't think we do.
Put it into the board to decide what you want to do, and just for, just a comment on the hotel design, I will point out that Cow Architecture was opposed to the design of the hotel.
Oh, were they? Okay.
There were two changes that the board chose not to make.
All right, I was misrecollecting the, the process perhaps, but-
Especially the materials, they were not, were not happy with those.
Not happy with the materials, well, it's not done yet either, so. Okay. So should we make a, should we make a motion, move on that tonight, or is that something, we can just wait for next meeting or something?
If you could, if you could make a decision tonight, I think that would help, at least we could check to see if they're available.
Don't they have to submit quotes?
Well, if you select them, you don't have to, you can just select them.
Usually, we select them on the basis of them submitting some quotes to us.
Yeah.
Right, but you don't have to.
You don't have a reason to think that one firm is primarily more qualified to do the work than someone else.
Right.
So if all things are equal, then you submit, you ask for quotes from different firms. If you determine ahead of time that a particular firm is of interest for a particular experience, something they offer, then you choose them. We've done this before in other projects, for instance, University Station. Every time we go out for a new application for project development review, we don't go out to a new consultant. We, we've been sticking with Beta and Cow, because they have experience on the rest of the project, so it makes sense for them to continue. So the thought was here, because they are experienced in Islington Center, it would make sense to continue with them, rather than bringing someone else who has to get up to speak.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if anyone else has an opinion, I guess I would be comfortable just asking them to submit a proposal, and given the history and the level of service, I mean, it seems to be, it's going to be hard to beat from a sort of level, sort of quality of service standpoint, and this is a pretty significant element in our upcoming series of many, many meetings, no doubt, so. Any other thoughts?
Wait, so you're saying you want them to ask you to move forward with them?
I'm asking the board if they'd like to, if they'd like to, not remake this insertion, I guess.
Move forward.
All right, sorry.
If they're willing to, you know, continue with the old rates, I don't think we needed to ask for a new quote if they're just continuing with the same rates as before.
So that project that they reviewed was nearly a year and a half ago, so I don't know that the rates would be the same, but we'd ask for a competitive rate.
Okay.
All right, it sounds like we're comfortable with that.
Okay, all right.
Decision. Oops.
Thanks.
All right. Where were we? So we'll talk about the subcommittee next meeting.
Sure.
Okay, any other topics anyone cares to discuss? All right, we have some minutes to approve, is that correct?
Yes. In your packet, you have March 7th and March 27th, those were the joint meetings with the Finance and Warrant Commission about zoning, and then your June 13th and June 19th.
June 19th is the one I missed, right?
No, you were there, that was a quick one last week, before, about the garage.
Got it. Okay. I did not have a chance to review that one, I did look at 613 and 327 and 27. Does anyone have any comments on anything? No? Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of 37 and 327, 613 and 619?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks.
Okay, so our next meeting is the 11th. We almost made nine o'clock, twelve minutes. All right, motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, draw the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.